Three o'clock.
At three o'clock? It's three. We need a new battery. Sorry, for those of you who can't see it, our big clock is a minute behind. All right, well, let's call to order this Appointment Alignment Committee meeting for Tuesday, July 15th. First up, we've got public comment. If anybody would like to comment, we actually have no one here presently. Is there anyone online? Nope, nobody online. All right, we will move along to the approval of the agenda. Would anyone care to make a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved and supported? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent resolutions. Need a motion to approve the minutes from the May 13th, 2025 Appointment and Alignment Committee Meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion? Corrections? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, Agenda and Action Item Requests. Item one, Community Corrections Advisory Board. We've got a suggested motion to place into nomination and forward to the Board of Commissioners the nomination of Angie Barxdale to the Community Corrections Advisory Board Workforce Investment Board Member Seat Vacancy, beginning immediately and ending December 31, 2026.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Discussion, and I actually would love to head over to Ron on this one to tee it off for us and then.
Okay. You may recall that we had a legal opinion, probably at the last A&amp;A meeting, but it might even been two before or one before that even, that essentially held that the workforce investment seat must be held by someone who is either a member of Michigan Works or is employed or in some way direct. I think was thought in the past. And in searching for someone who meets that category, I was aware because I had served as a chairman of that particular organization for 20 years that Angie Barxdale had filled that seat in the past. I think I mistakenly said that she was the CEO of Michigan Works. She's not. She's the second, I think, in command. But she's worked there for a long time. She did, in fact, go through the application process, I believe, in 2023, was reviewed by the Talent Committee back then. Another person was selected, however, to serve. And essentially what the legal opinion held was that person probably did not meet the qualifications to be in that particular seat. It's hard to find candidates that meet those qualifications, to be perfectly honest. In my first email to Angie, I asked her whether or not she could come up with some other names because I'd like to know. And she did not or was apparently wasn't able to do that. She is, in fact, willing to serve. We could, I believe, at this particular point, approve that, send it on to the Board of Commissioners. If you, however, feel that we must go back and start the process over with applications, that's what we'll have to do. I personally feel that I think we should take Angie. She's very good. I like her. Her involvement in this particular board in the past, I thought she was very helpful and had something to say and cared about the organization. I think she would do well.
Thank you, Ron. Any comments up here? It sounds like Allison's got one. Go for it.
I, so the actual action item, I'm not opposed to the suggested motion today. I would just, I guess, want to put on record again that I believe there were a couple of different legal perspectives on the last candidate. And the last candidate that did serve in that seat did go through a legal review and so was qualified according to that legal review. And so I just want to make sure that that stated. I think my, my perspective on being qualified for this particular seat may differ a little bit from our current legal review, although the two members that had, I think there were two, two that had submitted their application in the past, I would agree with Ron that they would not meet the qualifications and meet the caliber of what was currently needed. So with all that said, I'm not opposed to Angie.
Sounds good. Anybody else? No? And I think also, to piggyback on what you said, Allison, one of the individuals who was appointed did voluntarily step down. They had some conflict with their schedule, I understand, so we're not.
Yes.
Removing anybody from this board. We're just appointing somebody into an open seat.
Agreed.
All right, without any further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number two, Community Action Agency Advisory Board. Suggested motion is to accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners the nomination of Deborah Deeters, or Dieters, to the Community Action Agency Advisory Board Consumer Sector Seat, beginning July 22, 2025, and ending July 21 of 2028.
So moved.
Got a motion? Do we have some?
Support.
Motion and support. Ron, do you want to tee this one up again?
This is a very interesting situation, I think. We have some bylaws that are somewhat unique that deal with this tripartite, apartheid board and really break it down into three groups. The top group and the middle group, the top one is elected officials, the middle one, I believe, is, is it business persons? I don't have right in front of me. But they both require Board of Commissioner approval for those nominees to be actually selected as board members. The third part, which is the consumer section, does not. Instead, it has, language shall be selected through a democratic process. In my mind, as a lawyer and also as an advisor to this committee, is that those two things are different. Approval by the Board of Commissioners and selection through a democratic process are deliberately different, and I think they should be viewed that way. What is a democratic process? It can be as simple, in my judgment, as a vote of the Advisory Board to accept a certain nominee. It could be something more. It could be a Board of Commissioners approval as well. My point is, if that's, if that's the way it was intended, why would they write it like this? So what lawyers typically do is they look at the plain language and try to make a rational judgment based on that. So what I'm essentially saying is that the bylaws, which are not inconsistent with the enabling statute, and I believe were probably adopted by this board, not this board, but the Board of Commissioners at some point in the past, it could be as far back as 2000, I don't know, because I know they've been amended a few times, essentially mean that the board, if they, the Advisory Board, if they decide to fill a consumer position by vote, that's as far as you have to go. I don't think it's even an issue for this committee or for the Board of Commissioners.
So the Advisory Board is the Ottawa County Community Action Agency?
Advisory Board, yeah. That's their governing body or their advising body. What I've been told by Jennifer Rosowski is that they did, in fact, consider the nominee qualifications of Deborah Dieters, who is not a consumer directly, and the statute doesn't require that, nor does the bylaws, as long as they have some involvement with consumers. Anyway, that, that name was put forward to the Advisory Board. They did, in fact, vote by a majority to approve her nomination. So what I'm suggesting is that we follow the bylaws, which I don't believe are illegal or inconsistent with the enabling statute, to the letter, which means that for that third part of the board membership, the Advisory Board picks their own members.
So you would be advising that we not vote on this, actually?
That we, we kind of beg off and let them run that part of their organization.
Any, any comments or thoughts up here?
I agree. I think it would be nice if maybe they just kept us advised about just sending an email of letting us know the transfer of people who are serving.
But the very least, we can update the website.
Yeah.
On our end.
Yeah.
I understand.
I agree with that. I think they, you know, obviously, a board like that exists because of the Board of Commissioners. They're an arm of the Board of Commissioners, in a sense, so I think they have some unstated obligation to keep you advised of what's going on.
Anybody else have any other comments?
Makes sense.
Oh, okay. So do we need, from a procedure standpoint, just to not take action on this? Or how do we let it disappear?
We made a motion. We said.
We made a motion and we seconded it, and we're being advised that we shouldn't even bother voting on it?
Withdraw the motion.
Yeah, you can withdraw.
Just withdraw the motion?
I'll withdraw the motion.
All right. Does the, does the seconder need to also second the withdrawal? Sorry.
So once it's withdrawn.
Withdrawn?
Yep.
Okay. All right. All right, good deal.
And again, keep in mind, I'm going to meet with Jennifer to go over this issue, to make it clear in her mind, and also a number of other issues. This is a work in progress.
Sounds good. And I know Allison and I had a couple of questions prior to the meeting, so maybe we get down to the discussion item. You can bring us up to speed on a few of those, too. All right, item number three, Housing Commission Bylaws. Suggested motion is to approve and forward to the Board of Commissioners the updated Ottawa County Housing Commission bylaws.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
We're.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on this one. And one comment was, I know offline was a red letter copy. Thanks for that. We had some staff that were gone, for those of you just listening in. We weren't able to get a red letter copy, so Regina was kind enough to grab a red pen and mark it up for us. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Looked very nice. So, yeah, I'm sorry, any comments up here?
No, I just appreciate that happening, both for, for us, but as well as for anyone who's following and wants to see what, what things that we're changing or looking to change, so.
Makes perfect sense.
I can add maybe a little bit more. I know that Doug Zialstra has asked for a legal opinion on perhaps the Housing Commission going a different, non-statutory direction. I think that is underway.
Okay.
But the whole purpose of this particular item is to conform the bylaws to the ordinance, which the Board of Commissioners has already amended. And those two together to conform to the enabling statute language, which does not have this phrase that I'm suggesting we take out. So then everything would be uniform.
We'd be in alignment.
Well, as I recall, Mr. Chairman, I think you came up with this.
I don't even remember, but if I did, great.
I read one of your emails a while ago, and I thought that was pretty insightful. You got it.
Even a broken clock tells the right time twice a day. Any further discussion, or should we vote?
No, we just be voting no, just to be consistent. I voted no on both of these. Well, we didn't actually put up the ordinance for vote, did we? So I voted no on this in housing, just to be consistent.
I think we did, and I think you voted no then, the Board of Commissioners.
I, I, I thought we just kind of skipped the vote, so.
You'll, you'll be consistent with your no vote.
Regardless, though, thank you.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion carries. And on to discussion items. We've got some updates from staff. Ron, I think we threw one extra one on there for you regarding the Community Action Agency Advisory Board and whether or not a board member, an Ottawa County Commissioner, should be on that board. Something for you to look into in the future. I don't know if you want to start there or elsewhere on your list.
You know, this was raised by Allison a few minutes ago, and I honestly didn't have a good answer. I definitely will look into that and see if we do, in fact, have a problem there. And I think also on your list here is when we're going to interview for those positions that are open. We do have, I think, for at least one position, don't we have 12 applicants or something? What position is that for? So, you know, we've done that in the past by Zoom meetings, 10-minute interviews or thereabouts, pretty successfully, so I think we have to find a time to do that again.
Can, can I circle back to the CIA discussion? You said that you think we need a commissioner on there?
So it talks about, when we're talking about the three tiers of who's supposed to serve, it talks about elected officials, and it talks about Board of Commissioners. And currently, it had stated that if there's currently not a board member serving, that you are supposed to designate someone in the place. I know we have not done that in the last two years. I looked back prior to my serving. I haven't seen it recently. I don't see anyone listed that would have fit that, I guess, taking our place to sit on that as an elected official. And so I just am really asking that we have Ron check into that, have a conversation with Jennifer, and then bring it back for discussion.
So your, but your point is that there should be elected public officials or there needs to be commissioners? Because obviously, those are, those could be.
I don't have it right in front of me, so I don't want him to speak.
I mean, my understanding is that elected public officials or in their absence, you know, a, a, a public representative, right? But I don't remember seeing commissioners, and I think that would be fine if there were, but I don't think the statute says that there needs to be a commissioner on it.
Have you got it there?
I've got both in front of me here. The statute itself says that one-third are elected public officials, and elected public official may act through his or her representative. There's no specifics about what kind of public officials we're talking about.
Okay.
The bylaws say one-third of the members shall be elected public officials currently holding office, or their appropriate designated representatives. And that's it.
Okay.
You know, other than they have to be appointed by the county Board of Commissioners. So I'm reading that just quickly. Allison is not requiring that there be a commissioner. That may be the preference of the Board of Commissioners, but I don't think it's mandated by the bylaws.
Right. I think it'd be a good discussion for this body to have.
Yeah.
Yep.
If you can look into that and.
Maybe.
At our next meeting, as you're having the further conversation with Jennifer about other issues, bring that one up.
Okay.
Final recommendation of some sort.
Yeah, it, right now, it looks like it's optional, but I can certainly ask her if it's helpful to have a Board of Commissioners member, and might very well be.
And I think what I'm saying is, in the context of the other topics that you have to discuss with Jennifer, just touch base on that one, and then let us know where you guys land. And if we need further legal opinion or discussion up here, we can definitely do that. We're happy to discuss anything. As far as the interviews go, if that's the next one of the items that you just mentioned, it's about to remind me how we did this last time, but Regina, did you just take charge and do a doodle poll to find out when we're available? And then, or whatever the poll is called? And that would be great. That'd be great. And then get us all the applicants' packets and information, so we can, same process we did last time.
Could you back up on that real quick, Josh?
What you got?
So could you just kind of lay that out a little bit more? What is your thought on that?
The last, so we've got an opening for the Housing Commission vacancy, and we have 12 applicants, as I understand, for one seat.
Right.
And we're asking Regina or staff.
Okay.
To do a doodle poll of the five of us to find out when we're available to do interviews.
Okay. And then, what was the next step? That, that part I got, but what was the next step?
Oh. From those interviews, we would then come back to this full board. So remember correctly, we can't evaluate or discuss in those closed Zoom meetings, so we'll come back to the full board to discuss our, the candidates and make a selection publicly right here.
And make that recommendation to our chair. Because that decision.
Yes.
Belongs to the chair.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, I was just confused because I, I mean, I like the process. That's not what we kind of talked about last time, so I'm glad that we're adding that back.
Yeah.
And the reason. Sorry.
Sorry, go ahead. No, I might, when I saw.
Tennis here.
The interviews, I thought those were John's interviews. I didn't realize those were our interviews, which I think is, is good. That's not what we talked about last time, but I think it is a good extra step.
Yeah, at, at that meeting that we had, John said that he wanted to punt to us to do those interviews and to bring a recommendation to him.
I would also recommend that John is invited to these interviews.
Great idea. Yep. Join us. And he may not, but we can absolutely invite him. Does that make sense? Answer your question?
Yes.
Sorry, there was some, yeah.
Nope.
And actually, you bringing it up reminded me of the earlier debate.
Majority of the board, when we invite John like that, is that good, bad, indifferent? Doesn't that hurt?
You would have arguably a quorum.
Exactly.
We notice out those interviews to, like, we went to a board meeting or not?
And John's the only one to make the decision, and we made that vote as a board, so we can't make that decision anyway.
Right. I think if there's not.
Right, it would be the chairperson's decision exclusively, yeah.
If you guys can confirm that we would not be violating the Open Meetings Act, then I think we'd all be happy to invite John.
He was, he sounded pretty good with us, so making the decision and bringing it to him.
I, I have a feeling that he'll either watch or won't even watch at all and leave it to us to figure that out, but.
If we made him a viewing member and unable to speak.
There we go. Yep. Follow that one, Ron?
Do what again?
He could be a viewing member but not able to speak.
Yeah, if it's a Zoom.
Oh, I didn't. We could do that. We should do that more often.
Is there anyone you consider not allowed to speak?
Not voting if it's medical, right?
The other thing, I, I don't know if you're aware of it, but the lead staff person to the Housing Committee did send a recommendation out to the committee members, the Housing Commission members, about the type of background that he was hoping the person selected would have.
Okay.
I think we have to be open about that.
Sure.
Looking for a person who's well-versed in finances and that kind of thing. The problem with the commission, as I understand it from maybe Doug's perspective, is it's limited to five members. It's hard to have an expansive group.
As, as we've compared it currently.
Currently, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, we had the recommendation from Housing Commission for.
Right.
Folks with a number of different talents, which if the board were bigger, would be.
Right. So that, that being the, that being the statutory limitation, you have to be, I think, to have a, a good commission, very selective about who those people are. So you have the adequate resources that you need to actually run a successful commission. So anyway, that's, that's one of the concerns of one of the staff members.
I vaguely remember seeing an email to that effect from that individual, and I, because we'll be making the decision or the recommendation, not the decision, it'd be great if you could forward that to the rest of the committee here, so they can read it, whether they give it weight or not.
Went to you, but it did not go.
I'm not sure who I went to. I know I received it. Anybody else?
Yeah, I will make sure it's sent out.
Especially if we're going to be doing some interviews on John's behalf, it'd be good to have that. All right. Moving on to item number three, recurring meetings. After a number of discussions, it seems that it's going to be best for us to have our, set up a standard meeting, especially as we go forward into the fall and making more selections than any routine meetings, to be on the second Tuesday of the month at 11:30 or immediately found the Finance and Administration Committee meetings. I checked with staff, confirmed that the workload was not too much for them to host three meetings in one day, and that is where we landed. Any discussion on that or objections to it? Oh, we got a thought.
Well, I think it is a question for Regina, like, so obviously, we're not to the fall yet when the packets, the packet is not very much yet, right? So you haven't had to upload a lot of interview, any applicants, right? And I just remember in the last couple of years, that did take some time to do, and so that was just one thing I'm conscientious of on your part. The other caveat is one thing that, when I saw this on the discussion item, while I think it's convenient for us, and it helps to keep off mileage, and I think it's good financially, if we want to encourage people to be at these meetings, the more meetings that take place in a day that don't have a hard and fast end time, it does make it hard for the public to plan. And my, that would be another concern I have, is by having it on that same meeting with a third meeting, we weren't, we aren't always done by noon or whatever. So I'm just conscientious of people coming, wanting to be here, speaking into it, and I think you will have more of that potentially this fall when we have more interviews.
How, I mean, so far, these meetings haven't been incredibly long. I'd be fine doing 8:00 AM and leaving it at a hard time of 8:00 AM, if that's, I mean, I'm on baby time, so.
I think Phil's already.
Now, that's hard. That's, that's got to get here at 7:30, and I don't, I don't think that's fair to do.
No, I, I'm, I'm fine either way.
Do you want to come here today and sit around this night?
Ready for you? And grab coffee?
Okay.
I'll show up at your house.
All right. Good, good points, Allison. Thank you for sharing those, and let's, let's set it for now, and we'll see how it goes as we move forward. And, and do keep us updated as far as the workload goes. I know we spoke about that, and you said you'd ask for assistance as needed, so please do so. All right, last call to the public audience, of which there is no one. Oh.
Insurance, I mean, the Airport Authority, what's going on? Where's that at?
Nothing.
Okay.
Nothing to say.
So I, I've had a number of folks reach out to me about the airport.
Hey, we're going to open this up to Commissioner questions. How about that?
That's perfect.
Here we go. Let's go around the horn.
Phil wants to start out, you know.
No, I just.
You know, in the past, the airport, you know, serves, obviously, Southwest Ottawa and Holland Charter is not a member of it, as far as millages, I can look at that right, right?
I believe so.
So, but Park Township and City of Holland, for sure. You know, in the past, we've had Commissioners being part of that, and that's, I think, served that board well. This year, you know, we didn't have that, and my understanding is that, you know, the airport board would like to go back to having a commissioner, and, you know, whether that's, you know, during this year yet or at the end of this year. But they're definitely anxious to maybe have a commissioner being present.
Yeah.
On that board.
And I, I can give a little bit of an update on that one. I spoke with their chair, Chuck Murray, I believe it is.
Jim.
Jim, or Jim? Oh, sorry, Jim Story.
See, the chair of the, of the board.
But Jim is no longer the interim.
Oh, he's not.
They do have a, a full-time now, so.
Well, with their board leadership, let's say. And what they indicated to me was that they would, when we do our next appointment to the Airport Authority, that it, that we go back to that appointment being a commissioner. They've had an individual who's not a commissioner presently that was appointed recently, and there was some thought about changing that midstream or requesting that we make a change middle of the year, but they concluded that in their best interest would be to allow that person to serve out the rest of their term, and then at the end of this year, we'll make a, a new appointment and with an aim to point a commissioner back to that board.
How long of a term is it?
It's, I believe it's, well, the, the one that's being finished at any rate ends at this, at December 31 of 2025, so there'll be an opening. And I think it might just be a one-year term. I don't have it in front of me, and I'm kind of looking at Allison. I don't know if you remember.
It is till the end. It's just a one-year term. Yep, you're right. And I agree that I have heard the same thought process from some of the head leadership. I think it's also really important to hear other voices on that board, so if you have So if you haven't spoke with others or other perspectives from the community, the reason why it got changed the way it was is because the community asked for a pilot to be on there. So I, they did not have a pilot currently, to my understanding. So I'm just saying, like, before we just change it back or we close that window, just something to be conscientious of, that there were, it wasn't just a quick thought process.
Sure. Yeah. No, that's good. Thanks for sharing that perspective. And I think when we come to doing that appointment in November, making our selection, we'll take that into consideration as well. Does that answer your question, Doug?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay. Good deal. Any other Commissioner questions or comments? Wow. And no public comment?
Did you want to talk about number four?
Did I miss number four?
And there's something there, so.
Uh, not on the agenda.
Policy.
This one.
Oh, apologies. Right, I've got two pieces of paper here. Number four, this was one of Ron's talking points, right?
You only go up to number three, so you're going to have to tell me what it is.
Well, number, number three was the Housing Commission, and you talked about that. Number four is the appointment policy, and Doug brought that one up.
Well, I didn't bring it up. I'm just reading, so.
Yeah.
It says policy to be reviewed by internal review team in August.
On my sheet.
Yeah, your sheet.
Yes. You're right. We've been bouncing around a little bit. Apologies. But yeah, item number four on Ron's sheet for staff updates. My understanding on the appointment policy is that you guys are reviewing it internally as staff, and then are going to come forward with some recommendations for us to deliberate on and then adopt. And I know Doug's raised a couple of questions toward that end.
Right. So I think it was last, was it committee meeting or board meeting, and just kind of asked about the, you know, the internal review team and, you know, whether the Commissioners could or should have some sort of input to you as you kind of go through those changes and then bring them back to us, rather than the way it is now where the review team presents us with their ideas without us having given you some thoughts ahead of time. Does that make sense?
We, we generally have an agenda for those meetings, don't we? Or?
I think that particular policy has a lot of procedural items.
Right.
So I know Rachel and I have been chatting about updating some of the procedure. I think the actual policy itself is pretty short on that one.
Right. Right.
But what I'm saying is that if, if we could share the agenda with the commission, if you had input, we'd be.
Right. And it's not so much, you know, the appointment policy itself, although it'd be good to, you know, maybe give us the chance to give our thoughts to you before you, you know, put pen to paper. But, you know, some additional, you know, policies that are germane just to the Board of Commissioners, you know, I, I think like facilities, you know, they should have the right to say, hey, here are, here's some of our thoughts on facilities policies before you kind of put pen to paper, and the Board of Commissioners should likewise, you know, give you some thoughts. Oh, here's, here's the policies we're looking at in the next three months. You guys have some thoughts for us before we start, you know, marking that up, right? I think that would, you know, as opposed to us getting a, you know, quote unquote, finished product back from the internal, you know, review team, you know, have some discussion or input from us ahead of time. Before you do that, then we can kind of.
I, I don't, I don't know if it makes much difference, because when it comes back, it shows what they, what they changed, what they crossed out or what they added. To me, it makes, to me, it makes no difference.
Okay.
I, I actually concur with Commissioner Zylstra, and I appreciated your explanation of not just the things, policies that relate to the board. You brought up an example, if it was a policy related to facilities, that you would want, instead of it just being perhaps administration talking about that policy, you would want to have their investment in it at the upfront versus waiting till the end.
Right.
And it's the same, I see it in the same way as the board. If, if it's a policy that affects us, that there should be some work done from members here.
Saying, look, you know, Commissioners, we're going to talk about administrator evaluation, board rules, and Commissioner expense and mileage, as well as the appointments. Any thoughts on those four before we start marking those up? We'll give you the finished product back, but at least we have an opportunity to give you our thoughts. You know, I definitely have some thoughts about various of our policies.
Yep.
And to have to wait until we get something back from the internal review team that, you know.
Yep.
Facilities may say things, you know, have a better perspective on things than the internal review team does and maybe take some of their perspectives. I think as Commissioners, we see things that we may want to, you know, have some input before that.
Yeah.
You know, that process.
I think you guys are great, and I, I don't mind one bit, everybody sharing their thoughts with staff. If you guys, Regina and Ron, could just email out to us a copy of the policy as it sits right now, and then we can just email back some thoughts as individuals, that'd be great. You guys can.
For the policy.
Right. But when it comes to Board of Commissioners policies, we're kind of the directors, right? So, yeah, no, 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 I totally get that.